...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The House of Representatives was called to order. All hands in the house.
Mayor Reinhauer.
Here.
Earl.
Here.
Knox.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Neely.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Zimmerman.
Here.
Notes of the previous meeting were read and approved. Go approve. Let's go off to the board.
One million five hundred twenty-four thousand ninety-five dollars and forty-six cents in all funds, two hundred twenty-three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-two cents in the general fund.
Any additions?
There were additions today. We shall have copies of those. It's a hundred pay-fee.
Bill were read, resolution eighteen, page nine, page one.
Earl.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Knox.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Okay, the guests this evening, let's go to committee reports.
Just quickly, um, we was talking to the lady from the leg upon the, the committee on the empty houses and such.
Lady from the leg.
Oh.
Clerk's court.
Yes, from the clerk's court.
And we had a guest.
Yes. And she's a, we want to update the zoning on how to handle the empty structures in the town, to what we can do, we want to find out legal, what we can do to update that so we can take charge on getting rid of some of these empty houses. And we wanted to see what we, necessary means we got to do to go through that.
Um, before you get too far in the question, uh, I'm not sure Dick remembers, but we had a conversation with Mark some months ago on another topic where we was having a zoning issue, and when we got through that issue, and I can't remember what the topic was, but, uh, your office was going to look at revamping all of our zoning because in order to do zoning, I don't want to speak for the attorney, but there's a lot of process to do one change, so they always have recommended we do several changes, so you have same public hearing for several, not just to come back. It's a big deal to change the zoning.
That's.
But your office had recommended maybe adapting somebody like Crytersville or, uh, Carol, I mean, uh, somebody that had just updated and we were going to look at mirroring that.
I remember talking to Mark about that. It's been a number of months since I've been right, because when he was looking at it, he and I both read through it, and there were a number of holes and cross-references were wrong, those things had been changed or updated and it didn't get caught. I honestly, I don't know where he is, if he followed through with that, or what's going on with it.
But that would be the process. We're looking at changing, it was an issue that we had, that we had some zoning legality issues where it's conflicting, and it was like, okay, when we get through this, and we did, whatever it was, I can't, trying to remember what the issue was.
That wasn't with the used, the cars out here at the edge of town, was it?
No.
Might have been cement blocks on the house roof.
But it had something to do that got resolved, but then we said, when we get done with this, then we need to aggressively, because ever since I've been here for eight years, we've had several that we wanted to address and we were putting together, um, and wrong was the zoning, especially years ago, of several things we wanted to address.
I was just going to ask, do we have a list anywhere of?
We can look and see.
Updated or changed or modified, so we can, that'll be at least a starting point?
Yeah, but I'll, my personal recommendation, since I've been kind of looking at it, handling and dealing with your office over a couple of different zoning issues, I'm trying to think why we met and to discuss it, but it was so bad that we just said, we just need to re, it was a good template and they started, but typically over the years you work on it and it never got worked on. Uh, we, we had conflict with, uh, building because the setbacks that don't meet the set, you can't meet the setbacks with a fifty by one fifty, almost, it takes a perfect scenario to build a house in town because of the eight, eight in the front, fifty feet in the back, and twelve on the side.
You're not going to have.
You can't do it, so that was, that was, I think that's what it was, it was a building permit, and I think we did a variance on it to get it done.
Was that where Mike Spielers' property down there, what he was?
I think it may be.
He was building?
No, but it was, it was a, it was a construction type thing, and so anyway.
Doesn't matter.
I think we need to look at just maybe adopting a whole new, because ours is really, uh.
We could do that over the winter here, because I would like to really.
I mean, compare what would work and not, but there's so many of them that.
I'll talk, let me talk to Mark.
That are so difficult.
Maybe we can report in between this meeting and next to you and kind of let you know what we're thinking or what might work.
Okay.
We can do that.
Okay.
I have a park-related issue. Um, it has come to my attention that a white truck was seen driving on the walk path, the new part that's being constructed, and, uh, I guess it left ruts in the base that was put down that needed to be repaired.
Do you think that truck was a construction-related truck?
No, no.
Or village?
No.
Maintenance truck?
No.
Okay.
Um, and I asked chief mater, I said, is there something that can be done about that, like a warning, a citation or whatever, because it's clearly marked that, you know, no motorized vehicles, uh, and I'm sure this person has seen that posting. Um, he said he would look into the matter and discuss it with the mayor and the solicitor to see if we needed to clean up some language, or add some language, or do what we need to do to address matters like this.
Can you tell me an area where it may have been driven on, because we have a, a couple com, we have a couple different scenarios.
Yeah.
Can you tell me a general area where it was?
It was down behind, um, I would say, um, Bob Walti, Dick Harden, in that area back in there.
Towards the park or towards Wayne Street?
Towards, uh, Wayne Street and West Waltham Canada, closer to that, the front.
Down that. The reason I say this, Dan Whittenbury wasn't the owner, but Terry Reinhauer gave us an easement for that stretch of ground from Mr. Walti's towards Wayne Street in order for us to put the walking path in. That was one stretch of ground that the village didn't own, and when Terry give us that easement, your office drafted the language, and I can't go verbatim, but it emphasized, I mean, it went to the detail, only for walking, pedestrian, no motorized vehicles, so that to get that easement, it's, it's def, that area is definitely no motorized vehicle, because that's private owned, but we have an easement with stipulations.
Right, right. But I, I was just wondering, you know, if we had anything to address issues like that. I didn't know, so that's why I'd asked Nathan to check into it, and he said he would get that honest.
The attorneys have, we didn't give them some information what we were looking for, and they came up with, with this, and I'll pass these out, and this is, should we go with walk path?
And why you're passing that now is probably good, because it was brought to my attention this morning when that came into work, that the walking path south of town, which is our southernmost bulk boundary, had vehicle, automotive, meaning it wouldn't go a golf cart or a lawnmower, if a full-size vehicle tracks driving down that walking path, and so somebody was driving down there south, that's why it's asked for the talk.
There's been reports of golf carts and dirt bikes and.
And a dirt bike was seen on it.
Yeah.
So I think we need, we're looking at when it's done, we'll probably put ballisters at the entry points as an indicate, like most places do, but I do think you need to have some legislation that gives the law enforcement some teeth.
Right, and some penalties.
To defend it, because otherwise, I mean, we're putting a lot of effort, money, and I can't imagine why anybody would be driving a personal vehicle on our stone walking path because it's the base.
Yeah.
And it's getting ready for blacktop in the next few weeks.
That's why I thought, yeah, there needs to be, um, and I don't know if there needs to be some additional signage, because there's only the one posting, and I thought if somebody enters the walk path at different parts and aren't familiar, they may not know.
I, I would think that when we're done, like in the recycle area, because you can drive off of Wayne Street and enter the park in that area.
Right.
There would be a signage that would indicate what's allowed. There would probably be one off of Southwest Minster Street where we had put an entry into the park from there.
Right.
And there would be, I, I foresee, getting with the chief and coming up with some signage, but I do think you're, you need some legislation that gives them some authority.
Yeah, because I, I didn't know if there was any, and.
I don't know.
You know, and I, I think there should be penalties, not just a warning, because it's clearly posted, so.
Well, with this, I know you haven't had a chance to read it or anything, uh, you can, uh, read it over and address it next month, or you can go ahead and have a first reading and then read through it, and then have your second reading, or however you want to do it. This, this is a, a good start, if we have to modify a little bit as we go, we can.
One thing, when Mark and I were talking about this, and I can't take credit, Mark put it together, but when we were talking about it, he and I, from the information we got from the chief, we weren't sure what all you guys want to include or exclude on the path, and inline skates, roller skates, blades, scooters, what do you want on there and what don't you, that, that kind of thing, I think you all need to take a look at and think about.
What about with the breakies?
And if you want changes made, changes can be made.
Sure.
This will cover the whole.
But we want to maintain that any of the village equipment or contractual equipment that we permit.
Yeah.
You know, that language is in there that, you know.
That's why I asked if it was repair equipment, because we will need access to do that.
Oh, yes, yeah, it was. There's video of the person on there, isn't there? I'll make a motion that we can offer the ordinance, eighteen dash nine dash one.
Yep.
Developing rules and regulations for use of the walk path back to the park, and do offer some fines that need.
So, ordinance tonight.
I thought the bills were read as well.
That's right.
Resolution. Oh, I'm sorry. You're okay. I'll just take it now.
Well, this will definitely give you all a idea of the work board and any comments or suggestions, you know, at the next meeting, and you can incorporate.
Some, some regulations, some stuff, man, some stupid stuff.
Well, people are putting a lot of time and money and effort into enhancing the park and improving it, and we don't want heavy vehicles on that breaking it down.
Or even motorcycles.
Yeah.
It's not heavy, but it's, it's not right.
No, no, um, and you sort of want to maintain the peacefulness of the park, you know, so, so, yeah, certain things you don't.
I'm assuming, without looking at, I don't want to drag it out, but, you know, like a wheelchair or something like that would be allowed.
I think that was.
But not a golf cart.
Correct.
Right, right, um.
So those are lang, things that you got to look at.
Tweak, yeah.
You know, for definition.
Yeah.
We haven't had a whole lot of problems with the existing path that we have. We've had a few incidents, but nothing, nothing major, but since we put this in, uh, it just seems like it's a constant, you know.
It's going to get heavily used, and you want to maintain it.
Yeah.
There's a lot of anticipation for it, I mean, there's a lot of people interested in it to get done. I think Nathan's probably about half way out already.
Run it, yeah. If you make the fines good and enforce them, only got to do it two or three times, and they know you're going to enforce them, I'll scare them out.
Say, basically, no.
Yeah. Boy, boy, they're really strict.
Yes.
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
Neely?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Any other committee reports? Police report?
Okay, for my report, I'm going to address a couple of different things. Um, the last area that I'm going to address talks a little bit about some of the zoning that, uh, that you all brought up earlier, but I want to go into a little bit more in-depth on that. So, start out with the Lions Club Festival first. Um, the other festival on September the eighth, there were no issues, uh, from a law enforcement perspective, or Mother Nature did not cooperate during the entire event. Uh, it is being reported that the Lions Club may be planning to do the event again next year, though they believe it was very successful. Um, that's subject, that's actually subject to change. Uh, we've, we've talked, I've spoken with a couple of them, that may, that may actually change to better accommodate some school events and things like that, so, um, so they're looking, looking at some different things there. Um, the police department was recently approved by the state of Ohio and federal government to receive a printer for a cruiser that will print off electronic traffic citations. Now, the infrastructure's been in place with our reporting program, but the printer was too expensive to put in service, and thanks to a federal grant, we are eligible to receive a printer for free. The village's only cost will be the cost of paper. Uh, by having electronic citations, the chances of errors due to, uh, illegible handwriting will be decreased, the amount of time on a traffic stop will decrease, which will enhance officer safety, and technology modernizes the system that other states have already been using for years. We're still a ways off before we implement that, um, there's some different things that have to go into place, uh, before that goes into service, but I just wanted to give you a heads up that that, that will be coming, um, and we were, uh, part of a grant that was, that Ohio as a whole received, so, uh, we're going to see the benefits to that. The first hearing for junk vehicles was held on Wednesday, September nineteenth. The property maintenance committee heard from one resident and are in the process of making recommendations. I'm still serving notices to residents in town that have at least one unlicensed junk vehicle on their property. Uh, because my call volume for other calls has been steady, I've only been able to serve one to three properties each week, however, we still are moving forward and continuing to make progress towards addressing this issue. And also tonight with that, I would like to, um, pass this out to council, actually, I'm going to hand it to Jill and have her pass it down, please. Um, and I would like council to consider, um, reviewing this, taking a few moments tonight, and possibly even considering passing, uh, this as an emergency, and this, this has to do with the way we operate our property maintenance committee. Um, the purpose, um, and I'm just going to go over this real quick, I think it might be easier, uh, says, whereas residents of the village receiving property maintenance notices or citations are entitled to request a hearing before the property maintenance committee, and whereas it is necessary for the property maintenance committee to have the ability to assess costs against the individuals receiving a citation or notice in appropriate situations, and whereas if the village is unable to recoup these costs, it will present a financial hardship and jeopardize the enforcement activities of the property maintenance committee, which are necessary for the health and safety of all, this ordinance is declared to be an emergency. Be it resolved by the council of the village of Waynesville, August County, state of Ohio, that it shall be discretionary with the property maintenance committee to assess any or all the following costs to the property owner or occupant when they deem the facts to justify the same. All costs assessed shall be due and payable to the village fiscal officer no later than thirty days following the date of issuance of the decision assessing the cost. Costs not paid within thirty days, within the thirty-day time period may be assessed by council, uh, to property tax of the real estate where the violation occurred as part of the cost of abating the violation. The following shall be costs which may be assessed. Seventy-five dollars for the hearing, all summonses, writs, orders or notices, six dollars for the first name on the notice, one dollar for each subsequent name on the notice, mileage for each summons, writ, order of notice, or two, of two dollars for the first mile, one dollar for every mile thereafter, actual cost for, and the actual cost for certified or mailed regular notices. The reason that this is being brought up is, we, we learned a lot in our first hearing, and we learned that, um, the first hearing and, and most hearings are going to be about an hour in length. Um, you look at the resources that we expend, not only having the hearing, but preparing for the hearing, the time spent investigating, the time spent and money spent sending out the notices. Um, the, the costs that are outlined in this ordinance are less than if a person were to receive a citation, um, for not being in compliance, um, but it does offset the cost of us, um, enforcing this and convening the property maintenance committee to have a, um, essentially a preliminary hearing. So, uh, this would not be unlike, uh, the courts, um, assessing court costs when an individual comes in to contest a citation. So, I'd ask council to consider passing this, so, um, going forward when we have these hearings, um, and, and we'll have language in the initial notices that are served to the person when they are in violation, that if they come to a hearing, they may be assessed costs if they're found to be in violation of the village's ordinance.
Up until a hearing is requested, there is no cost though?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. There will be no cost as long as they take care of the problem before the hearing, but if they come to the hearing because they need additional time, or because they want to contest the alleged violation, then, um, if they're found in violation of the property, um, of the ordinance, then they would be assessed those said costs. Um, and, and that will be made abundantly clear, not only through the notice that provided, but as I serve the notice to the individual, I will explain to them that they have hearing rights, um, and if they do choose the hearing, um, they may be assessed costs, which would be less than if they were to receive a citation. Now, it could happen that they would receive, um, the hearing, they would come to the hearing, uh, be found in non-compliance, be given X amount of days to take care of the property, still not comply, and then they would receive a citation on top of that, so they could actually receive court costs for the hearing, and then additional costs for being in violation of, of the ordinance.
So, there wouldn't be a whole lot of difference between that and a traffic violation they requested to come to court for?
It's very identical, and it's actually cheaper to come to the property maintenance hearing than it is to come to, to mayor's court.
But the same conclusion comes out.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, really, we're, we're just trying to, we're trying to gain compliance without, without drawing out all of our resources, because if we have seven people that require, uh, or request hearings, we're going to be here seven hours, and I'm not sure any of us wants to be here that long to deal with each property, because each property owner has the same rights, and they have to explain those rights, um, in order to move forward. So, um, each case is just as important, uh, the first one's just as important as the seventh, so, um, it's not that we want to not allow them to have their right to have a hearing, we absolutely want them to have a hearing, but there's got to be a cost associated with that to, to keep this solvent and keep this moving forward.
Who will be in charge of this hearing, the mayor?
We already have, we already have the hearing, the property maintenance committee hearing, we actually had one this past Wednesday, um, there was a property that was in violation, and he requested in writing a hearing, so, um, we had the hearing, um, the individual was given, uh, thirty days to, uh, take care of the two vehicles that were on his property, which he actually requested that timeframe, and the property maintenance committee agreed that that would be an adequate amount of time to allow him to, uh, make arrangements to become in compliance, so we already have all that in place. We're just looking to, to offset the cost of having that hearing when, when we do have it.
And the only time is if they are served a citation, then it goes to main.
Okay, okay. So then, the hearing, yeah, building committee, he makes the first decision then, right?
The property maintenance, the property, yeah, what we, what we tried to do with the property maintenance committee is, we tried to build in a level prior to a criminal charge. Uh, we're trying to give them the ability to work with the village and, and, uh, you know, try to get their property in compliance before they actually have to go to court and, and get a criminal charge on their record for being in non-compliance, so, um, that's why we're trying to, you know, that's why the property maintenance committee was created, and, and I intend, or I don't intend, but I think this body's intention, based on what I've heard, is they'd like to expand the property maintenance committee's, um, ability to hear other violations, such as tall grass, or, um, you know, not just junk vehicles, maybe, uh, trash on a property, or, you know, things like that that fall under the code that wouldn't necessarily be a, a law enforcement criminal offense initially, but could turn into that if, you know, if they aren't taking care of, of other problems as well.
I'll make a motion, we declare an emergency, ordinance eighteen dash nine dash two. We put this ordinance in commission for the general committee, property maintenance committee, and establish the, the fines or the hearings or whatever. I'll just take it.
So this is going to be to suspend the rules of three ratings and to declare emergency, and then we'll do a vote on the actual ordinance.
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
Neely?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, two more things, uh, the annual Waynesville Goshen Homecoming Parade was held Thursday, September twentieth. Uh, there were no issues, and it appeared everyone had an enjoyable evening. Um, this past Saturday, the twenty-second, um, WG had their homecoming dance, and I am happy to report there were no major issues at that event either. It had a couple of small, um, issues that we took care of, but nothing that resulted in any criminal charges or anything like that, so, so I was happy with that. The final issue, um, that I would like council to consider taking action on is the used car lot on East Waltham Canada Street. Over the last several years, I've received dozens of complaints, if not over a hundred complaints regarding the Eaton Auto Trucks used car lot. As recently as June twelfth, two thousand eighteen, an inspection of the property by the Ohio Bureau of Motor Vehicles determined that property has numerous violations based on its standards. The matter's been referred to the state licensing board for possible suspension of Mr. Maurice Duggan's dealership licenses yet again. While talking with the state's investigator, it became very obvious that there is a limit upon the authority that they have without the cooperation of the local municipality. That said, the investigator encouraged the village of Waynesville to enact stricter zoning regulations if this lot and potentially other properties is considered an ISO. The investigator stated that if the local jurisdiction has stricter standards than what the state requires, and a used car dealership does not comply with local standards, then the state of Ohio will refuse to allow a car dealership to operate until both local and state standards are met. Now, the village of Waynesville has several areas of concern when it comes to zoning, as we've previously talked about. For instance, the inconsistency in how certain properties are mode based on their zoning, as well as the enforcement behind that, residential properties versus commercial properties versus industrial properties. A lack of zoning for constructing a fence on or near someone's property line, which has led to some fairly major civil disputes among residents. Uh, zoning could even cover a safety regulation such as features, um, around a swimming pool that provides for privacy and safety. And the village's zoning is antiquated, uh, from a building perspective, too. A ten-dollar building permit to construct hypothetically a one-million-dollar residence, uh, or a one thousand dollar permanent porch is laughable. So as council, I would ask you to please consider taking tangible steps towards updating our zoning laws and regulations. We don't have to reinvent the wheel, as we previously talked about, um, maybe the first step would be to have a committee or attorneys obtain copies of surrounding community zoning laws and regulations, and then pick what might be best for our community. Uh, zoning laws are a living, breathing document that needs to be updated as times change. Um, I believe now is the time where zoning laws should come to life. Um, we have to have public meetings before zoning laws can be changed and council can vote on it, so people will still have a voice, uh, so I do urge you to take as proactive step at addressing the problem that will only continue to grow. The steps we've taken to help clean up the village is moving in the right direction, and I believe if we update our zoning, uh, we're going to clear a major hurdle towards the goal of making the town more inviting and fair for everyone across the board. That's all I have, thank you.
Ms. Ray reports.
I have a resolution before you. Uh, we had applied for a, a grant for West Waltham Park renovation, um, and we didn't receive it last go-around, and it's up for us to apply again. Uh, we were close.
towards the goal of making the town more inviting and fair for everyone across the board. That's all I have. Thank you.
National Security Reports.
I had a resolution before you. We had applied for a grant for West Wallfalk renovation, and we didn't receive it last go-around, and it's up for us to apply again. We were close, and each time our anticipation is more likely to happen. So we're asking, in order for us to get the application in, to apply for those funds to be considered for the restructuring of West Wallfalk, we need to pass a resolution tonight for the engineers to submit those requests and applications. So that's what I'm asking this evening.
I'll make a motion, we pass resolution number 18-9-2. We authorize application to Ohio Public Works for the funding of the West Wallfalkaneta Street improvement project, the village.
Second it.
Miller?
Yes.
Newland?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
Neely?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
The only other thing I had is I would have liked to have reported today about when the blacktopping would start, because not only are they gonna be blacktopping the park for the walking path, we put all those grants together and look and push for all of the best quote for our bid. So at the same time, we have several streets that we paid. I'd hoped they got a report back when they'll start. I didn't get that yet. So, but I anticipate it's gonna be fairly soon. So anytime now, they should be starting that. So hopefully, next month, we'll be talking about how nice it looks versus when they're gonna start. And that's all I have.
You know, he looks impressive.
Preacher's Silver's out, right?
What'd you say?
Speak up.
Speak up.
Jill said I could only say two things, so I've done.
Mayor's Court, $2,876, cause of the general fund. Other thing I have is the date for Trick or Treat. Chief, do you know when everybody else has theirs?
Give that to you here in just one second here. Thursday, October 25th.
That sounds like a good shot. When everybody else has theirs.
From 6:00 to 7:30?
Part of that's, that's people from my town.
Yeah.
We should have a big problem with that.
Mayor?
Yeah.
From 6:00 to 7:30, on that date?
Everybody good with that date? Okay, 25, 6, 7, 30. That will go to old business.
We have a tree out here by this round window that needs to be trimmed up to make it look better. And if it can't be trimmed up to look better, it needs to go away. But it does look bad.